Here instead, it's been on the works for quite a while and we're excited about prospecting how to go here during the day. And then option for a club after school that would be designated for their own space. The only option after school, there's many options, including going home or H or sports, but as long as we have call for youth club, it could be the best it can be. So it's a growing, thriving, well-positioned club and we believe that it's huge for us to enjoy as a community.
I know the Lilly Grant and the Ready Grant both have an emphasis on funding going to rural communities. For one, daycare is definitely one of the goals for both Ready and Lilly. Housing is obviously another one of the goals we have. So I, I think it's the perfect project to qualify for those grants. And the fact that the school is partnering on it, providing match dollars and the space, which is an in-kind donation is phenomenal. It just speaks to how often the school partners with others in the community to meet the needs of the community. So I think it's a pretty exciting project.
Mr. Schardt?
I think that it's a definitely a good project. Paper supporting their goal.
I kind of echo what Mr. Neeram, Mr. Monroe said, I think is most worthwhile. And it's something that we really need. And I have, you have my support. Mr. Githens?
I agree.
So Doctor, you're asking for a letter of, okay, may I have a motion for the letter of support?
It's been moved by, excuse me, Ms. Monroe, have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Githens. A discussion, if not all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign. Thank you, Doctor. Do you have the letter?
I have.
Oh, you have it.
I have a drafted letter that was drafted for me kindly to Taryn McFarland, Vice President of the Regional Initiatives. The town of Culver is pleased to acknowledge and support the planning and work on two projects. We've heard from one, we can separate these projects out if the letters want to be separate. Also, Dr. Schuman provided me a letter as well that was individualized or per project and could be used in the absence of. So yes, we do have a letter, which one we're using, we have letters, we'll, we'll determine here.
All right. I have to apologize, I kind of went off script here and looking at the agenda. Lee, we'll put you under new business, is that all right? Okay, well, I let you follow her, but we've got a couple of things we have to do here first, so my apologies. I thank you for understanding. Okay, but still, anybody other than Dr. Schuman wish to, we have any other speakers tonight? If not, public concerns, utility ordinance violation or appeals. Anyone in the room for ordinance violation, appeal? Anyone online? No? Hearing none? Let's go to new business. The Dunes Infrastructure bid opening, please.
Okay, we have bids for water and sewer extension project. Are there any other proposals? Okay, we have two. The first is from Reed Riley Construction Co., Inc. from South Bend, Indiana. And they have submitted the Form 96 with the non collusion affidavit, the bid bond. I was going to the addendum. Any helpful statement? Total bid amount, $3,243,397. Okay, next, it's not Mark, do you know what contractor this was from? Same. Form 96 with the non collusion affidavit. Check here?
Who was that bid?
DMV.
Collins.
DMV.
So I assume you want to take the bids under advisement, have Kevin involved with you then? And then?
That would be normally the recommendation, yeah, does that align with?
It is aligned with what we kind of do with best guidance.
Mr. Monroe, let's go motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we take the bids under advisement, allow our town manager and utility superintendent time to review them.
Mr. Monroe moves to take the bids under advisement, do I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Mr. Schardt, need further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign. Thank you. Next on the agenda is Council President, appointment to the Redevelopment Commission. And I'm going to appoint Jerry Seiler.
He just appointed Jerry Seiler.
Kippen was out.
You leave the room for a minute and you come back and everybody's hearing it.
Next, Lee? Well, can you come kind of forward a little bit more?
Right now. So I'm here tonight to ask you guys for Ready Grant letter of support for the project that I'm referring to as the exchange. If anyone here doesn't know what that might reference, it references the old State Exchange Bank, which used to be in the building that now houses Farmers Bank at the main intersection downtown on the corner. The city state bank was here for about a hundred years. When I was a kid growing up in Culver, that building, that bank was that anchor for Main Street. And I've always wanted to be able to rehab it and reutilize it and make it an anchor again for Main Street. On to that end, some consultants I had gotten close to told me that I should have a foundation to be able to do things like apply for grants and do the type of economic development I wanted to do. I set that up in November of last year. And I had previously had some concept drawings that I was using to show people that my idea was kind of conceivable, what this building conflict was, was rehabbed and how the interior would be laid out. And I talked to some local developers, you know, within striking distance. And you guys probably know this from looking at small development project on a Main Street. They're smaller, so the margins are thinner, so they can be riskier and they don't always attract developers. So I kind of backed up and I just put together a strategic plan to be able to go after developers within a certain radius that might be qualified, might be interested and would be able to engage and work on this project. And I found a developer, T.L. Jackson is the name of them. And T.L. Jackson is in Syracuse, Indiana where Dana grew up, no connection, but out near Warsaw. And they have over 50 years of experience. Father started the business, then the two sons took it over, so it's two brothers. And now their sons are investing in the business. So one brother does residential work and the other brother does commercial work. And so that's who I've been primarily speaking with, his name is Brad Jackson. Brad is the kind of guy you like, like the moment you talk to him. He's a pilot, which is just cool. He's been a county commissioner for almost 30 years. And he's part of an economic development group out there that focuses on rural economic development. So he just gets it. Anyway, I used to be in my, my work life, an executive recruiter, so I still have to reference people. And I knew an inspector out in Warsaw that I picked up the phone and called. And he's also an expert witness for, you know, construction lawsuits. So I thought he'd be a good guy to call. And when I told him that I identified T.L. Jackson as a potential partner for a project in Culver, he said, stellar. So, oh, and interestingly enough, Dana and I were at the same event recently. It was a Mike Braun fundraiser and it was personal, so it was at someone's home. And at one point, we ended up talking to Mike Braun at the same time. And he had just been out in the Lake Wawa Sea area and he said, yeah, I didn't get to stay with my friend. You know, some sort of conflict. And we find out that friend was Brad Jackson. And so even he said great things about him. So literally, you know, here are these people from, you know, building inspector to a state senator. They just have a fabulous reputation. So I shared with you guys, I sent you all write-up, that basically the idea for the building is for it to be the new town hall on the first floor. And I know in the 2004 King Compliment Plan and the most recent Compliment Plan that that was a desire to find a new town hall. Because this is a very pretty, anyway, the, yeah, I know. Farmers wants to stay, they want less space. So each of those stories is about 5,000 square feet. So the first floor would be the new town hall with about 4,000 square feet. Farmers would take about 1,000, maybe a little more than that. Second floor, floor would be high-end condos. Even the roof could potentially be some sort of common space, that remains to be seen. The basement would be golf cart parking and storage for everyone in the building. Very rough estimate from the builder was the project would be about a $5 million project. So that would be a $1 million Ready Grant plus a $1 million match from the town, $3 million from the developer. And I can tell you, in dealing with Marty and Kevin, these smaller deals are tight. And, but we are trying to make it work. The bad part about finding T.L. Jackson is that we found them in May. So to try to get this all together and have everybody meet each other, share all this information, what you guys are looking at, those, those billable prints and the town hall thing is kind of like Kevin's, what he requested from the architect. But they're a first go around, so those can be edited, moved around or whatever. But we just got those and that should just get a more accurate, a more accurate pricing from, from T.L. Jackson.
Lee, is that pricing for renovation or teardown?
Renovation.
Okay.
Yeah, I've been through that bank building so many times now, I could probably give tours through that bank building. Honestly, then there's the leak here and there's, but no, when they walked through it the first time, and Brad's going to do it again when he comes to meet here, I thought they'd walk out and go, this is a teardown, and they did not. And they said sometimes that's a bigger job. The harder part, teardowns, and Kevin is finding this out, you know, in terms of valuations, sometimes teardowns and rehabs have different issues that you have to address. But, but no, in the four months this has been going on, four months, four and a half months, any one of the partners in this could have walked, anybody could have walked. If T.L. Jackson said, this doesn't make any money, so we're not making any money off of it, whatever it is, nobody's walked yet. Everybody's a player. Farmers has been great, they've been great, worked a lot with Marty and Kevin and even Karen and Dana. So everybody's still in. Really, the grants writing is almost done, we're just editing now and collecting letters. I know that August 30th is sort of a drop dead date, but we will be in a meeting with this developer right after the long weekend to try to hammer things out and stuff.
For that application, and I know the RDA wanted applications by the 30th, which was like crazy deadline. I mean, it just, they just rolled out those workshops. So from a commitment, so are you looking tonight for a support letter versus a financial commitment? Like is that?
Yeah, but just the support letter because we're going to know more details about a week after the closes for Ready. And because of the commitment, you know, we for Ready to be able to put this deal together. I mean, if we didn't get it, it would block a path. I'm not saying that there's another path, it couldn't be found. But not getting that Ready money would just stop the whole thing. When right now, it has a lot of really great momentum. It would be, it would be nice to see if we could, we could hammer it out and put it all together.
Two, if I may.
No, yeah.
Two of the conversations that Lee's had with the town is number one, would we be interested in a long-term lease for a town hall? As well as what could be a possible redevelopment commit, match? The, the answer is in the bets. And, and she knows and she's been working hard to get numbers, but they've been slow coming. And well, because of finding the developer late in the game and then trying to get the bank wrestled down is always a challenge too.
I mean, just last time they rolled out Ready, it was the same deal for us. We had, after they finally rolled it out, six weeks, I think, that are. So I guess, so this idea, a version of it, when we were doing regional cities and then after regional cities, Jerry had approached us because he had applied for $400,000 for an e hub back when regional cities was around in the bank building where the, instead of condos, it would have been an e hub, which we couldn't really get our heads around because we didn't have a partner, there was no programming for it. There wasn't private investment associated with it, where the town would have had to have taken on not only the match, but we would have had to do a deal with redevelopment at county level where they became a private investor, which was really us. So it didn't, you know, it just died in its tracks, that version of it. Condos is, seems more feasible because at least there's private investment with the developer coming on to say, all right, I can make this work. But sorry, I didn't mean.
No, 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 I mean, just to put, you know, maybe a little perspective on it too. Farmers, like a lot of places that have a lot of, you know, big brick and mortar and they want to get out from under it. They just sold their building in Peru to, it's the version of MCEDC in Miami County.
Energy Development Commission.
Is that what, I don't, I don't know the name of it. But that building, so the, sorry, I call it the State Exchange Bank. But the Farmers Building is 5,000, approximately 5,000 square feet on each floor. That building that in Peru is 36,000 square feet. It's cool looking, it's brick and it's got these big pillars in the front. They sold it for 150. So we're thinking it would be maybe half that or maybe less, like in 60,000 to 75,000 or an inch. But they also sold it with the idea that they'd let them have a year to put people in the building. I would never do that personally, you know, I want to know that a building was going to, already had tenants who want to come. And by the way, I left out the fact that Marlene Mahler was saying that would be a great place for township trustee to also come and have a place in town. And Culver Coffee Company is very happily put a kiosk in there. So I left that out in terms of other people.
We've always wished we could get Marlene into the same building with us. It makes a lot of sense from a collaborative standpoint. You know, the fact that she supports our emergency services, she's been integral to our budget time. So right now, the $5 million estimate is kind of just developer and you guys walking through the building and, okay.
Yeah, those numbers should get tighter when we have this meeting after the, for the long weekend. It's just the first time we get, it's hard to get everybody together in the summertime. That, that's been a challenge, I have to say, but that's when we're getting together. If the, if the date for Ready Grant submission was the 30th of September, we'd be a little bit better off.
I know at the time that we were talking about doing this back when it was regional cities. I know, Bill, were you on the town council at the time? I can't remember, I thought so. And I know a couple of people went over and walked through that building. I think Wayne did at the time, if I remember right. Yeah, and I think the idea was, you know, would this be suitable for town hall or not? You know, we'd obviously have to delve into that. And then do we keep, you know, philosophically, I'm just sexually, obviously you can't bring police over there and can't bring EMS over there, but they need more space. This building needs renovation as well. I think great if you could just, you know, bundle up all the renovations we need to do in town.
Hey, a little bit of town days. We're not done yet.
Um, so I mean, I, for, I like the concept of this because we bring a lot of foot traffic to this building right now. A lot of people still pay their bills in person, I think that would benefit the downtown. For me, if it's a Main Street initiative, it makes sense. It's obviously unused space right now. I know how badly it needs to be redone if that building's going to stick around. Has the bank committed anything from an ownership standpoint?
Yeah, they already sent me a letter, Ready required it, but they, they will relinquish the building, they want to sell it.
That was the case, the first time we looked at it, they were willing to do that. And I think even when we did the.
And the price keeps coming down, and banks' price keeps coming down.
Well, and I know we tried to get the historic preservation grant on that building as well and they were willing to do it back then.
Unfortunately, it's gone now.
Yeah.
So it's not much.
Yeah, and they, they're not, they only did two of those and I don't think they've brought that program back. And I doubt they will.
Two years ago, I think they terminated.
Yeah, I mean, you might be able to get an Ocre grant under Blight if, if Ready doesn't work.
Ocre's grant is so small, that's the hard part, you don't make an impact.
There's a limit on the, I think Ocre's Blight one might be 900,000, but I could be wrong about that number too. I'm just, you know, throwing out.
I don't know if that building is really historic in terms of as an, as an, as an edifice, that there's anything really historic left. Because if you look at the original building in like 1929 or 31, whenever it was built, it's right about then. It's just a brick building, you know, that's, that was its original look and the entrance was on the corner. If you were going to restore it to that, you know.
It's in a historic district, which is how that, they qualified for that grant. But if you get a historic grant, it's very restrictive. You wouldn't be able to do the cool stuff you might want to do.
Yeah.
So there might be an advantage to not having it get historic funds.
Mr. Githens, what do you have to say? Well, this afternoon, I received an email from Mike Payson, who's the former bank manager there at First Farmers. And I'm going to read it to you. OMG, that building is not safe and is not one I would renovate. Good luck with that. I worked in that building for eight years. It's terrible and not sound to invest in. It's a teardown and start over. And $750,000 for a condo with no lake access? What? Everything about the bank building and the town, I was involved with Dave Eichlberg with the bank. I met with Boo and her contractor years ago. I wouldn't invest a dime in that building because it's of its condition as a rehab project. It's a teardown. The structure wasn't sound for an elevator. The cost of the project would be insane. Tear it down and start over. Mike Payson, who's Assistant Vice President of First Farmers Bank and Trust.
He's, he's Rich West's son-in-law, correct? He's Rich West's son-in-law, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
So I guess my question then, I'm looking at it just conceptually right now because we don't have accurate numbers or we have, we haven't met with Lee. I know you guys have had some meetings and I know you've had meetings with the developer, et cetera. So conceptually, I'm looking at it and I guess my question in that scenario would be, well, if it were a teardown and the budget was still $5 million and it qualified for Ready, you know, where was we staying then? Because to me, it doesn't matter if it's teardown or a renovation, it's, it's, it's a big project. And it depends on if we want to move town hall there, we want to lease the space. Do we, do we think conceptually it would work, et cetera? But here's the thing, it can't get any Ready funding if it doesn't get support. There's, even if we decided this project's not for us and we're not going to do a match down the road, you can't even get that stuff without us having further discussion, which you plan on doing anyway. So to me, it's, if we were interested in the project and we want to have all the discussions, which is going to involve a lot of meetings, et cetera, and delving into this, engagement. You know, I'd want to know even what are the Main Street business owners? What, does it, would this work for us face-wise, departmental head-wise, storage-wise? There's lots of questions. And we can go down that road no matter what, but she can't qualify for Ready without supporting the application. And if we're denying the opportunity for Ready funds and we didn't want to do this project, we'd be probably, it's not ideal not to support it in that sense, conceptually.
Jenny, I would just add to that real quickly. The person who walked through the bank building, well, several years ago, was actually Chad Leep and his partner from Skyline Builders. I always liked Chad a lot. And I just asked him, can you walk through this building with me and tell me, is this a building that has to be torn down? You know, whatever. And, and the answer, I mean, and those guys are builders. And they didn't say, oh God, yeah, this has to be torn down. Now, are there structural issues in the building? There absolutely are. They're, you know, gutting a building rather than it down. You still got a building on the interior and pretty much rehab a building. So tearing it down is just the external part of it. They gut it, if they're internally gutting it, you know, they'll, they'll be dealing with structural issues, et cetera, that are on the interior.
Yeah, mitigating mold in the basement, which was for me, I can't tolerate being in the building for that.
Yeah, you can smell it.
Yeah.
And I think the, the previous meetings that we've had and the conversations have centered around two, I think, really central points. Number one, is a bank project essential or viable to a master plan to Main Street development? And that's for the consideration of the council, I think Lee's asking for support of that notion. The second thing is, is it a viable Ready project that could gain attention and maybe be developed as we keep moving through the Ready process? That's another consideration. I think both of those are what the support letter represents. I think what is contingent on the backside, obviously you've articulated a little bit, Jenny, is that, number one, are the numbers viable? Nobody's not asking us to sign on the dotted line, the numbers have to be right and that's a conversation. And the second thing is, design-wise, you've mentioned it, right? Is it feasible and is the timing right? Right, can we get it? I mean, we're pushing the gun on Ready anyway, right? So it may be a timing issue too that we're up against. But today, I think it's just a letter of support, right, for the idea.
And a letter, and a letter of support doesn't mean that they're going to grant.
Absolutely not, and no way.
I mean, that's, that's what it comes down to.
Yeah, but it does have a housing component, which to me is more feasible for Ready than if we called it an e hub or.
That's right.
Regionally, if it, it's more of a Main Street initiative, really. Regionally, if it it's more of a Main Street initiative, really, right? In my opinion, you're driving traffic to a building on Main Street that happens to also have the housing components. So there's kind of two ready qualifier. Regionally, we'd want to try to tie it to other Main Street initiatives if possible in that application. Even if it's not the August deadline, the the one that's further out, when they make you flush it out and, you know, have your match dollars lined up and all of that. You'll definitely want to tie it to other Main Street projects, and I think there is probably.
County, you mean?
Yes, there are in Plymouth. There's a large initiative.
The entire region?
In the region.
Yeah, so even South Bend, Elkhart, if they had some, I know Plymouth definitely had some projects on their list. But so the the one component that could be. With a town hall potentially going in, that can disqualify you from some federal dollars, but it doesn't mean you can't use the federal dollars on a different floor. You know, like for the condos or whatever. But we'd have to figure out if that's even if they would make that feasible. I don't know.
Initial conversations, Jenny, I think, suggest that through a lease rather than ownership, that we don't directly benefit from that. And therefore, we I don't think it would be conflict.
I can't remember which one I talked to.
It's more the federal map, the federal money that I'm referring to. So like Okra is a federal grant, and if you put a town hall or a clerk's office or something, even emergency service in the building that you're spending federal money on, you can't spend it on the square footage of anything that's municipal. So you could in this kit, and it could be the same with ready. I don't know. It is federal dollars.
Is ready to owe federal dollars this time? I I didn't think it was federal dollars this time.
Is it state?
It is.
So we might be okay.
So I think that's one of the reasons why we avoid the company.
Just FYI, we did meet with Greg Hildebrand. I mean, I've talked to Greg for a while now, but we did meet with Greg Hildebrand and John DeSau. And so they reviewed the concept and the idea, and John said, I don't see a weakness in this. You know, I mean, conceptually, right? So he was he was supportive of it.
I definitely think having the housing and the Main Street are getting two of the, you know, there's definitely two things there. Qualify, not that Main Street is an initiative of ready, but for us, it's.
I think Karen referenced it too, is they were saying that that trying to make sure that this money goes to rural projects and rather than having, you know, just the larger cities take take it off of their projects. And that there weren't a ton of rural projects. So they thought at least this time around, it would be it would be have a pretty strong show.
Yeah, I think the goal is like twenty-five percent, right?
It's more than a goal. I think it's written into the legislation. It has to be spent on. They reminded us that that can be an Elkhart, though. There's rural.
Yeah, they didn't really define rural. Although Marshall County might be their rural component, I would think.
Rural is anything other than Indianapolis. Mr. Scherdy, what do you think?
I'm, you know, in favor of supporting the project. You know. For sending a letter of support with the application. That building, like you say, has been there quite a while.
Mr. Nair?
I would say that even people from Manhattan would say Indianapolis. I say it's viable as a Main Street project, viable as a ready grant project, and I really trust Brad Jackson's assessment. He's an expert, and I believe he can do great work on this project.
I think it deserves support. I think we have to, you know. You're asking for a letter of support, and you can't do anything until you get that letter of support.
Well, no, the grant is pretty much ready. It's on. We're just editing it now, and and I have other letters of support. It would just be nice to other the town council.
Well, that's what I mean, but you give from the from the council.
Yeah.
So, you know, if that's that's something that adds to the ingredient, I think that's that's very important.
Well, I think despite having other letters of support. If we're conceptually supporting it, it opens consideration for the match because you have to have a me a match. It either would have to come from redevelopment or the town itself. And all those details and all those conversations and public meetings have to take place. We haven't had them the way, you know, you started those conversations with reps from the town, but we haven't dived into it enough. But we can at least conceptually support it along with the C Y C project.
Right, project, big grants, twenty percent.
Yeah.
Well, may I have a motion then for a letter of support?
Make a motion.
Just for a row of seconds. Any discussion? If not, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Oh, same sign.
Lee, before, just one question on logistics. Would it be acceptable for you, from both of you, to have the project outlined within a single letter? Sometimes that's more efficient.
Yeah.
Is that fine?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
You were just going to email that to me?
I will. I will have our president sign it, and I will email the copy to you. We'll also have one. You'll be supported under Marshall County as well. That's a generic, a large, at-large letter, so, okay? Thank you.
Good.
We didn't put the Marshall County letter on here. And while we're discussing ready projects.
I was going to hit it with the, why don't you go ahead? Can I go ahead and get this approved right now?
Yeah.
Is that okay with everybody? Great. So I have.
Approve that.
We're just going to.
Yeah.
Give me like five seconds to let you know what you're approving. All right. These letters are both drafted to Taryn. Obviously, you have a pretty good idea of what's going down here. The first will be for the Culver Youth Club Center and State Exchange, both Culver projects in-house. Both contain descriptions of the projects that are benefited to the town of Culver. I ask that you consider this as a council. If you want to do this in one motion, fail swoop, or you want them individual.
I think we already approved that one.
Okay, good. We're good. Second one. Okay, I didn't know if we were just saying that or what. The letter itself will be signed, if you don't mind, sir, President. The second one is to Taryn, and this is a letter of support that represents all of Marshall County's projects. Having said it, when Marshall inhering the projects, Freeman has some excellent ideas coming down, especially with trail initiatives and whatnot. Plymouth has some wonderful downtown initiatives. They're benefiting from the Lilly Grant, but they're also going for a ready grant. Almost seven million dollars worth of projects. Obviously, they're not funding them all, but there are some. So the projects are great. The county commissioners heard it on Monday and have some support. I would like for the town council to consider a letter of support for all Marshall County projects, if you would, please.
I'll make the motion. We approve the letter of support for the Marshall County ready projects.
It's been moved by Mr. Rose. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Scherdy. Any discussion? If not, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Oh, same sign. Very good. Do you have any more?
No.
Well, we're going to. Is there any old business that we need to? Discuss?
It's the twenty-five budget on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Twenty twenty-five budget. I'm sorry, Taryn. Yeah. Yeah, thank you. That's all right.
I sent out to every all the council members to South Union, basically, the twenty twenty-five budgets as they stand right now with estimated income and expenses. I also outlined that this is preliminary. We will have a public hearing on September twenty-sixth. But I need to generate the public notice, and so I would like to provide these figures in there. I made a note that I added four hundred thousand dollars to the fire department budget to cover the down payment for the fire truck that we'll be purchasing. That way, you don't have to go through additional appropriations. When we first discussed budgets, we weren't sure when that payment was going to hit, if it was going to be this year or next year. It's a lot easier, a lot smoother. I just added it to the budget. You all had discussed during the budget meetings possibly in increasing the amount of support for Marshall County Council on Aging from five thousand to six sixty-five hundred. I didn't want to be the one that like strangles you on that. So I did increase that amount. You all can discuss at a later time what you want that amount to be. But I did just want to build that into the budget, and that's what we desire to do. Because just as a reminder that this is the permission to spend. It doesn't mean we're going to spend it all. We can obviously spend, hopefully we'll spend less, but we can't go over what is advertised. So I want to get that out ahead of time. I I took down the grant amounts of three thousand dollars, which would be for the Operation Pullover that the police department has done in the past, but they haven't done recently. I left, I put in the remaining ARPA funds that we have is sixty-eight thousand nine fifty-six. Hopefully, those will be spent by the end of the year. So it won't even come as a play next year, but I just want to make sure that that's taken care of. I did send an email about the ready ready grant money. I'm not sure if that has to be put in, but we may spend that this year, so I may have to do other hoops. So and I included the open restricted and unrestricted. And then the M P H I added, I think last year we had included thirty thousand dollars as payment for the new street sweeper, and that one didn't get included, so I put that back into this year, to the twenty twenty-five budget. May or may not use it, but I just want that flexibility, if you will afford that to me. At this point, it looks like we're about including the four hundred thousand dollars for the truck, which is a capital outlay, or six hundred sixteen thousand over, which take out the truck, that puts us down two hundred sixteen thousand. Give or take a little bit. It's a number that I feel very comfortable with based on where we've kind of been in the past, establishing the budget and then actually adding some excess revenue. If you all feel comfortable going ahead and approving this as is, this will, this is the information that I use to do the public notice and then come back to you in September twenty-sixth for the public hearing and post-reading.
One quick question, because I just thought about it when you were talking earlier, Kevin. Earlier this year, one M C came in and presented as funded funding for potential hiring of director. Operations, et cetera. And we never made a decision on it. I know it was discussed last year as well. I'm guessing they're going to head in that direction at some point.
They are, but I, Artie, you were also in tennis that meeting. I did not get the sense that that would be something that is driving at the moment. It was discussed briefly last meeting, but and there there is a need slowly for the organization. But as it's getting its feet, that need is not immediate. That's all I can say. I don't know if they'll come back in six months and the need will pop up.
That's my.
That's my interpretation.
My concern is we'd end up doing a special appropriation, and I don't know if that's okay or.
Yeah, what I what I would say is that the there was concern because there was a misconception first that it was a pay-to-play idea for the municipalities, so they dropped the idea of soliciting money from the municipalities. At this point in time, we're going to focus on corporate contributions. And also, I believe that community foundation is working to see if there's some grant-related money that they can contribute. But there's no question but that the organization does need an executive director in order to fully realize its goals. And at some point, they will turn to the municipalities for support.
They wanted that need to grow organically, so it can be just so it can be, the need is there, and then they can justify the expenditure.
And the municipalities identify it the way some of them did when it was cross.
And there were several that were surprisingly in favor of it, that people are moving, so.
I just, I'm throwing it out there as a, because I know we're, M C E D C is budgeted in there, but we didn't budget anything for something like that. I'm comfortable with it becoming an issue next year potentially and doing an appropriation if we were supportive. You know, as as long as you're comfortable with that, Karen. Okay. In that case, I would make a motion to approve the budget and enabling Karen to move on with the process of publishing advertising.
Mr. Rose to go on with the budget. Is there a second? Second, about Mr. Nair, any further discussion? If not, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Yes?
Well, we know at that time during public meeting what leftover funds versus the budget, how that's going to affect the tax rate for the.
You probably won't find out what the tax rate is until the budgets are all everybody that's saying.
It may be nice to know whether it's going to, your budget is going to affect our extra. I'm sure that.
I understand your concern. But there's a lot of other factors than just my budget that go into it, includes status value. And so I need to know what the final status value is for for the area in order, and that that's what. When the deals we have come out, we have the five budgets. That's what I know with the final factors. So my. The other thing to keep in mind is. So basically, the tax rates impacts that are. The the budget is separate. I'm sorry. It's very, exactly. It's a complicated, it's not like a simple thing to say, okay, well, you're making, you're bringing in X X money, your budget's going to be this. There's a thing. Our, the the money that funds the budget comes from a lot of different places. The main supplier of it is the property taxes, but we are limited on how much property tax that we can use towards our budgets. So the state comes, the state has said, has basically said for the last year, this year, and next year, that maximum amount that the the levy, which is the property taxes that we collect, that it can grow is four percent. That's it, regardless of the economic factors, the interest rates, cost of living, cost of of goods. That tax rate can only increase four percent, and that's it. That's what we're we're set to. So with the with the increase in assessed value, that actually drives the tax rate down.
I'd try to explain that to Karen many times.
Thanks, Rob.
I think what would be for the audience then, is the budget considerably up from the previous year, or is it about the same?
It's about four percent. We try to keep it about what we can grow, and that's about it.
That's it.
But we were also, as we have been the last several years, conservative on the estimate to revenue. And same with expenses. So the last two years in a row, am I correct? We've had major surplus at the end of the year where we didn't, we had more revenue come in than we expected with the budget, and we spent less than we budgeted. So we ended up banking into the general fund. So by being conservative on the revenue and conservative on the expenses, we end up in pretty good shape.
Which then we're turning around and putting away towards capital expenses, like the fire truck. We don't have to find it's like, we're going to go ahead with.
Yeah.
That was Mr. Russ Mason.
He'll stand by here.
For those listening in. Karen, does that, so the two thousand twenty-five budget?
Okay.
Do we have any old business? If not. Board and commission reports. Anybody here to report for the plan commission or technical review?
I'm here for the billing commissioner report, sir.
I'm here for the building commissioner report, sir. July twenty twenty-four, building permits applied for, this is in lieu of our building commissioner by his permission. Nine in July, fees for building permits and improvement location applications. Culver received thirteen thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars in the month of July. This increase was largely fueled by the Culver Educational Foundation. Zoning ordinance update, solar ordinance draft nears completion from the solar committee. The battery storage systems draft ordinance is in process. Building Commissioner Steve Gorski will be requesting a meeting with Sean Cerisey to discuss the current status of the recommended provisions for the zoning ordinances. Unsafe structure report, nothing new to report. It is recommended that Culver begins to have unsafe building committee meetings every two months. This is to keep this topic active and an opportunity for citizen input. Steve also recommends we verify what the makeup of the committed, or of the committee, I do believe he says, should look like and develop meeting rules. Possibly Town Attorney Sean Cerisey could give us some guidance on this issue.
I thought we were the unsafe building committee, the council, right?
Yes. I think we will advise Mr. Gorski. So TRC, if you don't mind me rolling through this, met twice in July, the regular meeting had one case. The BCA had a work session meeting in July to discuss the executive storage buildings on Tamarack Road. The plan commission did not meet in July due to no cases to hear. They needed a break. The BCA met twice in July. The regular BCA meeting had one case. The BCA had a work session meeting in July to discuss the executive storage buildings on Tamarack. And that is building commissioners' report for the month of July.
Bill, Russ Mason again. I have a question. You know, you, didn't you say the technical review committee went over the, uh, storage building thing, so did the BCA?
Yes, and yes.
Did the subject come up about the buildings being purchased now? That was never a consideration when everybody talked about that project, because.
Can I save you a little bit of time? Because that was exactly why the work session transpired. What was found was that the, the BCA asked, uh, CMD and Culver Beachview to come before them again, because they had changed the conditions that went from a lease in the original agreements to sale purchase. Now, they needed an explanation as to why, and they were not comfortable just allowing it to go. During that, if, if I may, thank you, sir. If I may, what they have decided is that they required an addendum that specifically spells out what the new, what the new sale lease balance will be, as well as the conditions that prevent people from staying overnight. If they are going to be called a covenant or condo regime and have a, uh, homeowner's covenant, if you will, then it has to be explicit, just as it was in the lease. So they're asking for an addendum to be brought before them, and they will make that consideration. That is where the case is at right now, Russ.
Yes, so the, once that, uh, language, it sounded as though CMD was going to work up language, provide it to all the members that the BCA before worked through any issues they might have. And once they have it to a, a state that the BCA members are comfortable with, then they'll have another public hearing to consider uh, amending the approval of the, of the, uh, special use that was previously granted.
So this would be a new special use.
This would be an add, this would be an addendum to the, if I'm, if I'm trying to say so. This is an addendum to be considered to the new special use. That is not meaning that it is automatic. Once they produce the addendum, it has to pass muster before the BCA.
They wouldn't have to rezone it?
No, no, they do not.
It's.
It's so commercial.
Yeah, it's so.
It, it, it is. And what the concern, the real concern was that it, that this was changed without the knowledge of the BCA. And our BCA picked up on it, and they questioned it, and they brought him in. Absolutely, one hundred percent couldn't say it better.
That whole, that whole process, they had to even have their lease agreement had to be approved by the BCA.
That's right.
If I'm, if I remember right.
It, it was, it was. And again, we're not here to speak why or how it happened or what the intention of that is. What, what happened was there was a change that didn't make the BCA comfortable. They caught it, they called them in, and they are considering it right now.
Yes, the commercial zoning, um, it's, uh, doesn't allow for storage units, but it's a, it's a special use. So that was why it was granted. Then the BCA added a condition to the, the grant that it had.
I was there for it.
They wanted to. So this would be a request to modify that condition, um, is what they're proposing.
Yep, and then we hear it met shortly.
Redevelopment Commission.
Where do you go, spread your commission of early, um, routine meeting earlier today, uh, though we did, devote considerable time to the spending plan that we are, um, for the first time being required to push together and submit, uh, or I should say file, uh, with you, uh, the town council, as well as the, uh, department, the L G F, the department.
Government.
Thank you. Um, that, that is due December first. Um, it has some, uh, teeth in the requirement that, uh, we are unable to spend money next year. That is not, um, considered within the spending plan. Um, there is not a lot of guidance with respect to the format or the actual requirements, um, the degree of granularity that needs to go into it. But, um, we're embarking on a couple of things. One, figuring out how to file this plan uh, in a way that it gives us maximum flexibility for things like budget this year goes over into next year or things that just kind of come up that we hadn't anticipated. Um, but also it gives us an opportunity to really strategically think about the spending for the redevelopment commission, um, compare it to the Culver twenty forty, uh, comprehensive plan and the initiatives contained in there. Um, and, uh, to help us prioritize, uh, where we think the, uh, the top investments and redevelopment opportunities are for the town. To get there, um, we're, we're embarking, uh, uh, over the next, uh, ninety days to, uh, first give it, uh, kind of our own thinking to it, and then identify stakeholders and engage those stakeholders in what they think the proper investments for the redevelopment commission should be. And, um, there's some, uh, pretty obvious stakeholders, um, around town, um, and some maybe not so obvious. Um, and so we're, we're, uh, committed to doing a significant amount of public engagement uh, and, um, discussions with the town council as well as, it's like the visitor center, retailers on Main Street of the business community, um, school, of course. So it was an interesting discussion and energizing discussion. I look forward to doing this for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Murray. Um, tree commission, is anyone online for the tree commission? Okay, we all have any in the room? Okay. Town manager report.
Uh, I have some orders of business that I'd like to take care of really quick. Um, the town of Culver has a cross connection policy that was requested during a recent water plant audit. Um, this cross connection policy will actually address one of the concerns that I have had with us. Um, as I write the letter, uh, is essentially just a policy that was, uh, standard draft issued to me by Bob. Um, asked for the town council's approval, and it is something that we are, it's a necessity of I D M to pass through the, uh, request that they had in terms of the letter. So I asked that you approve that. The water plant inspection had five points. Um, one was concerning the cross connection. Um, another was a, a storage container. There were pretty simple things that were addressed, and I'm finishing the letter. And once we get this approved, I can send that letter down to give it to Bob.
Motion to approve the letter to deal with the cross connection, uh, water plant policy.
Mr. Rose, Mr. Rose to approve the, uh, letter for the, uh, cross connection. I have a second.
Actually, Mr. President, really quick, just some language, uh, just the approval for the policy.
Or just approval for the policy.
And then my motion to approve the policy for cross connection.
All right, I have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Shardy, any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. A couple of Culver permits, and these are going to be fun ones. Um, the historical preservation wants to meet on twenty-first of September, two thousand twenty-four, uh, from thirteen hundred to fifteen hundred, getting all military on us. Seventy-five to a hundred people at the Masonic Cemetery. It is the, uh, what is it? Stones and stories, or stories and stones? Yeah, there we go. Um, it does not require any type of street control, uh, looks pretty easy. Uh, J D Castleman is our contact, um, got most of the signatures, and I asked for the council's approval for the event.
Same here.
Been moved by Mr. Rose. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Githens, any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Good, thank you.
Uh, next permit, uh, that, for our special event is nine twenty-one, twenty twenty-four, as well as nine twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four. Start time's going to be eight thirty a.m. till twelve thirty p.m. It's the Knights of Columbus Candy Drive. It's what we need, more candy. Number of people anticipated is twelve. Uh, we're going to be at the stop sign of State Road seventeen to ten for you candy fans. Stop sign north Lakeshore Drive and Academy Road, and stop sign at North Main Street and West Jefferson's pretty, uh, Saint Mary's of the Lake, uh, Catholic Church. The Knights of Columbus Council thirteen seven twenty, those fighting knights, uh, are the host for the event. Um, there are no special considerations other than the locations they are. They have safety vests for the Knights of Columbus. That's nice, collecting candy, and they'll be standing out with cones at the stop signs. I ask for your approval of the special event, if you would please.
Same here.
It's been moved by Mr. Rose.
Last second.
Second by Mr. Shardy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Approved.
Thank you. Last order of business, and I apologize for my dress this evening, but I came right off of practice field, which leads right into your hometown Culver, Community Cavaliers will be hosting Attica for their first home game tomorrow night. If you guys get a chance, it starts at seven thirty. I'd love to see people out there. Public pitch for the, and the academy will also have a phone, phone game, our home game, be fair and equal, right? And the Eagles will be, uh, I'm not sure, I think South Ben Adams, who are also the Eagles. So if you want to watch a bunch of Eagles fight, I don't win the academy. Thank you, sir. That's it.
All right. Report, Karen.
I have two claims for your approval, level ten coatings, fourteen thousand four hundred dollars. That's for the beach lodge deck coating that just was installed. And then Thomas excavating and welding thirty-seven thousand one ninety-four forty-two, and that is for fire hydro replacements.
Chair moves to approve claims over twenty-five hundred. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Githens. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign.
That's actually all I had, but Terry Wakefield, um, because we didn't have department head reports, there wasn't a spot for him, does have a request, what he requests, and he's online.
Terry, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, thank you guys for the off-schedule time. I'm not going to be able to make the next meeting. I, last time I was in, I was talking about tires for our tanker that we got, and I finally got some prices back that I could, that I can keep my head around. Uh, we need ten tires that come to a price of seven thousand one hundred sixteen dollars and eighty-four cents. And that's for our two thousand one tanker. So I would like to have an approval to put some tires on this twenty-three-year-old vehicle.
Is that the state price, Terry?
Uh, that's the best price I could come up with, the tires that are recommended for that vehicle. There was a cheaper, uh, uh, price for some that were state tires, but that's not what it's recommended for. So I went with the same tire that the manufacturer suggested.
Counsel. What's the dollar amount again, Terry?
Seven thousand one hundred sixteen dollars and eighty-four cents for ten tires.
Thank you, sir. That's not a bad price.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second it.
It's been moved by Mr. Rose to accept the, um, tire price, and second by Mr. Shardy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Anything else, Terry?
With me for that. I have one more thing that I want to bring up. Uh, we're in the process of looking at some grants. And I just want to make sure that the board's going to be okay, that we try to file for some grants. We may, maybe throw in some additional paperwork at Kevin and Karen and maybe even Sean um, to buy certain things to help out with our budget. Uh, we're looking at Norfolk and Southern R E M C, Firehouse Subs, and the Marshall County Grant. So, uh, just wanted you guys to be on board with that. If anybody's got any issues.
When you say Marshall County Grant, are you talking about community foundation?
Yes.
Okay, let me know if you want help writing that.
I, I definitely will. We're reaching out to try to do something to help our budget, to help things that, uh, that we can get. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Terry.
Attorney's report.
Yeah, I just report that, uh, the zoning ordinance amendments, I have all of the notes and work that Jeanette had done. She had planned on getting that completed before she left to become judge, but there was a interval between, uh, when there was, the other judge retired, there was a month where there was a senior judge filling in. And then there was like a month and a half where there was nobody covering the court. So Jeanette's planned on spending that time working on the zoning ordinance and wrapping up all of her cases, but she ended up, uh, working as a judge pro tem, uh, during that whole month and a half. So when she actually finally got to the court, it wasn't like a mountain of a mess. And so, uh, she didn't, wasn't able to get as much far as she wanted in the zoning ordinance at that time. But starting at, uh, in September, I'm going to start, you know, calendaring a certain part of my, each week to, to work on this and getting with Steve on it. So I would anticipate it's probably going to be sometime, uh, closer to the end of the year that I should, um, have some draft materials to start, um, you know, getting public input and engagement on. That's all I have.
Okay, consul, this was Mr. Nair.
Wish you tonight.
Mr. Rose. Mr. Shardy.
I have nothing.
I have nothing, Mr. Githens.
I have nothing.
Motion to adjourn.
Remove.
Moved by Mr. Githens.
I was seconded.
Second by Mr. Shardy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.